I'd like to call the February meeting of the Planning Commission to order. I will call on Commissioner Hicks for the invocation.
Sure, let us pray. Lord, we thank you for this day and for the many blessings that you have already bestowed upon us this day. We thank you for life, health, and strength to do your will in your way. We ask that you would continue to bless the citizens of Suffolk, of Virginia, and all over this land and country. We pray for peace in Ukraine, but we also pray for peace in the streets of Chicago, in the streets of Detroit, and in Portsmouth, and right here in Suffolk. We ask, Lord, that you would wrap your loving arms around our defenders and protectors, and that you would keep them all safe. Now be with us today, Lord, as we attempt to make the best decisions possible during this session. We love you and we praise you, and it is in your matchless name that we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Wyman, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Here.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Here.
Commissioner Edwards.
Here.
Commissioner Goodman.
Here.
Commissioner Hicks.
Here.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Here.
Chairman Singleton.
Here.
Commissioner Staylor.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Are there any corrections to the January minutes? Hearing none, they withstand as presented. This afternoon, we have four public hearings, and the public hearings are for 30 minutes, 10 minutes for the proponents, 15 minutes for the opponents, and five minutes for rebuttal. This meeting is videotaped and televised for public viewing. The first item on our agenda today is rezoning request, RZN 2021-021, conditional Burbage Grant Active Adult Condos. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is a rezoning request, RZN 2021-021, conditional Burbage Drive Active Adult Condos, submitted by Melissa Venable, Land Planning Solutions Agent, on behalf of Jerry Bowman, Eastern Virginia Law Group LLC, applicant on behalf of LVTC II LLC, property owner, in accordance with Section 31304 and 31305 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to rezone the official zoning map of the city of Suffolk to change the zoning from OI, Office Institutional Zoning District, to RU18 Residential Urban 18 Zoning District for property located at 7521 Burbage Landing Drive, zoning map 6, parcel 12, star 2, star 1. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, zoned OI Office Institutional Zoning District. The comprehensive plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and a recommendation to City Council relating to the rezoning request, RZN 2021-021, conditional. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. As stated, this is a request to rezone the subject property from OI Office Institutional Zoning District to RU18 Residential Urban 18 Conditional Zoning District in order to construct an age-restricted multifamily development. The property up for discussion is located within the Mixed Use Core Use District in the Northern Growth Area. The property to the south is Zoned B2 General Commercial District, and to the north is the Virginia Department of Transportation VDOT District Office, which is zoned OI, and the Colonel Fred Cherry Middle School Zoned PD Plan Development. To the east is residential property zoned PD, and to the west is Lakeview Commerce Park zoned M1 Light Industrial Zoning District. Supplemental information was provided by the applicant and states that the reason for seeking the proposed rezoning is that the proposed RU zoning district will create a mixed-use environment along Burbage Drive and will support and complement the surrounding commercial uses. Additionally, the narrative provided by the applicant states that leaving the site as an OI would create a vehicle-dependent site with no opportunity for place-making. Incorporating high-density residential provides a mix of uses along Burbage Drive and will begin to activate the pedestrian access that currently exists. Before you is the rezoning exhibit, which shows that the applicant is requesting to rezone from OI zoning district to the RU18 zoning district in order to construct the age-restricted multifamily development. The property is located within the Mixed Use Core Use District, which provides for the highest potential residential densities in the city. The use district is intended to provide an area for high-intensity business, retail, residential, and civic uses. The density and types of usage should encourage walkable mixed-use neighborhoods with a vertical orientation. The housing types that should be found in this district include multifamily dwellings, such as apartment buildings and condos. Overall, a range of housing types should be provided on small lots at a density of 25 to 40 dwelling units per acre. The proposed RU zoning district would allow for a maximum of 18 dwelling units per acre, which is lower than the recommendation of 25 to 40 units per acre. The applicant has voluntarily proffered the following conditions in support of this rezoning request. One, that all units shall be age-restricted to 55 and older in accordance with the HUD standards. Two, the proposed development shall be limited to no more than 98 condominium units. As proffered, the development will be limited to 98 multifamily units, which equates to a density of 10.3 dwelling units per acre. A conceptual plan was provided in support of the application, however, it is not proffered and may be subject to change during the site development process. The conceptual layout depicts 50 units to be constructed as 10plexes and 48 units to be constructed as sixplexes, for a total of 98 units. As presented and proffered by the applicant, the proposed density of 10.3 units per acre is less than the maximum of 18 units per acre for the RU18 zoning district, and is lower than the Mixed Use Core Use District recommendation of 25 to 40 units per acre. Wetlands were identified at the rear of the property and found to extend down the southeastern property line, occupying approximately 1.6 acres of the site, which reduces the potential number of units that could be realized. While the envisioned development of the property would not meet the densities recommended for the Mixed Use Core Use District in the comprehensive plan, it is important to note that the development would work towards diversifying the city's housing stock by offering additional retirement housing in accordance with Policy 6-1 of the comprehensive plan. Additionally, the property is located near the edge of the use district, which lower transitional density should be considered. The comprehensive plan sets specific themes and policies related to land use, transportation, open space, and the environment that should be considered when contemplating a rezoning application. Policy 2-3 is to promote a balance of residential and non-residential land uses. The property fronts along Burbage Drive, which consists of properties zoned for commercial, office, and residential uses. It is important to note that the subject parcel does not have frontage or visibility from College Drive, which would be a considerable factor in any potential OI uses for the property. In the vicinity, there remains large tracts of undeveloped commercial and industrial land, and a significant amount of developed or underdevelopment mixed-use properties, most notably at Hampton Roads Crossing and the Point at Harborview. The proposal will work to balance these more intense uses in the area and transition to a less-dense residential setting. Policy 2-4 promote compatibility in land use patterns. The proposed zoning would allow a transition from commercial to high-density residential, and then to the existing medium-density residential townhomes and single-family detached homes. The proposed conceptual layout demonstrates that the site has been designed with an interconnected, walkable network of streets and small blocks that will feed into and maintain connection to Burbage Drive. It is important to note that the subject parcel fronts along a local street rather than a minor arterial or collector roadway. Local streets are typically comprised of residential uses. And Policy 6-1 encourage development of balanced and diverse housing stock through the city. This proposal aligns with the policy as it would increase the city's inventory of attached dwelling units, which is a product type that is underrepresented. Furthermore, the proposal directly aligns with Action 6-1J, as it will increase opportunities pertaining to retirement housing. No rezoning request should be approved, which would cause a reduction in the levels of service standards or public facilities impacted. According to the TIA provided by the applicant, there are no improvements that will need to be made as a part of this rezoning request. The Traffic Engineering Division reviewed the TIA and has no objections to the proposed change in zoning. Public water and sewer are available to serve this site. The Department of Public Works Engineering has also reviewed the application and expressed no concerns. Further stormwater review would take place at the time of site development. Additionally, as this is an age-restricted development, there are no impacts to the Lastly, subsequent to staff's report, the applicant has provided elevations of an ongoing similar development in order to demonstrate how the proposed residential units would look. A copy was provided to each of you prior to this meeting. Please keep in mind that these elevations are not proffered, however, as depicted and proposed, the development would align with place types that are recommended within the Mixed Use Core Use District. In summary, staff finds this proposal rezoning request, RZN 2021-021, conditional, meets the intent of the provisions of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed development would offer variety age of restricted housing types and allow for a transition between the core commercial of Harborview to the residential neighborhoods existing along Burbage Drive. The proposed rezoning from OI Office Institutional Zoning District to the RU18 Residential Urban 18 Conditional Zoning District aligns with the goals and objectives established within the comprehensive plan and the Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed zoning is consistent with the surrounding land use patterns, therefore, staff recommends approval with conditions of rezoning request, RZN 2021-021. I'm available for any questions after the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. Officer Jackson, is there anyone in the lobby that would like to speak to this item?
No, sir. No.
Thank you, Ms. Collier. Now, open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon, Planning Commissioners. My name is Melissa Venable. I'm the co-owner of Land Planning Solutions, located at 5857 Harborview Boulevard in Suffolk. I am representing the applicant. Mr. Bowman is also here. He is present to speak if there are any questions for him as we move forward through our public hearing. I also want to, as always, thank the staff for working with us on this rezoning application. Their diligence and responsiveness is always very much appreciated, and they do a fantastic job. So, thank you very much, Amy, Brittany, and Kevin. I've reviewed the site many times over the years, this particular site, for many different potential developers. We've looked at civic spaces, public uses, high-density apartments, and single-family residential. The current OI zoning, as mentioned in the narrative, is a difficult zoning in this location, specifically because we are on a local roadway. OI is limiting and does not provide the ability to have a mix of uses. O-I zoning, which the site is, has become less attractive to office users when competing with mixed-use communities like Bridgeport and The Point, which we have very close proximity here in Suffolk. These new mixed communities have walkability for office users with restaurants and housing and entertainment nearby. The nine-and-a-half-acre site, and rezoning before you, is adjacent to the VDOT site, which, as you know, has taken many years to fill, and it's also located next to the B2 site just west of us or south of us, which is visible from College Drive. Our site does not have the same visibility. When considering these adjacent parcels and the Burbage Grant Residential Neighborhood, the comprehensive plan and the ordinance, the proposed high-density, age-restricted neighborhood seem to be the most fitting, as you see in front of you today. The proposed use encourages a mixed-use environment along Burbage Drive. It encourages walkability, and it is supported by the ordinance and meets all levels of service. Not only are walkways provided currently along Burbage Drive, a transit stop on the Purple Line is also currently located in very close proximity to the site. The rezoning would provide diverse housing inventory and more affordable age-restricted homes. As you see up on the board, this is a product that's being built very close off of Shoulders Hill Road as part of Bennett's Creek Quarter, and we see the quality being very similar to this. And I think you're mostly all familiar with the Francis's product and the quality of their work. It's been ongoing for more than 20 years here in Suffolk and has stood the test of time, and all their products and projects look very good. So, this would be in the same vein, but again, this would be an age-restricted product with both a six-plex building, which would be new to the market, and a 10-plex, which is very similar to what you see here pictured. As stated in the staff report, the rezoning meets the intent of the 2035 Comprehensive Plan and the Unified Development Ordinance, as we are offering the variety of age-restricted housing types. The proposed use allows for a transition between the core commercial of Harborview and the residential neighborhood that exists along Burbage Drive. I'll stand by with any additional questions you may have and look forward to your support on this application. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Venable. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone in speaking in opposition? Ms. Venable, you like to make any additional comments?
The only additional statement I would make is we have reached out to the Homeowners' Association on January 26th. We've had some email correspondence, and we are planning on a future meeting with them, but they know of the project coming, and we have not heard of any ill will or anything negative. But we will be having a meeting moving forward.
Now, I close the public hearing. Commissioners, questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for Melissa, if you don't mind. Just a brief question. When I rode by and looked at the project, the proposed project, the site, and then looking at the map that shows that there's B2 immediately on one side and OI on the other side, that is VDOT, did you have any discussions with VDOT, since that is zoned exactly like this piece of property is as well?
We have not had any further discussions with VDOT in regard to this particular property, no, sir.
Further, what does that, did that mean you had original discussions with them at some point?
I think, I know the current property owner has reached out to many different groups in regard to the property without having to rezone it. VDOT's been there for a couple of years now, so I think there has been conversations without my involvement, but with this rezoning application, we have not had any particular conversations with them. Obviously, they've seen the signage and received the notification, but no other conversation recently.
Thank you. Misses, any other questions, comments, or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval of RZN 2021-021 with the two, I think it was two comments, with two conditions, yes.
Have a second?
Second.
Second, from the Eberwine. Discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Mr. Wyman, will you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks. Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyman. Ms. Venable, you have approval from this body, and we build the City Council on March 16th. Recommendation for approval. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Next item on our agenda is the Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2020-023, Rainbow Smile Children's Daycare. Mr. Wyman, will you read the caption, please?
Yes, sir. This is Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2020-023, Rainbow Smiles Children's Daycare, submitted by Kim Yancy and Geneva Bowden Bagley, applicants and property owners, in accordance with Sections 31306 and 31406 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a conditional use permit to establish a daycare, family-day home, five to 12 children, on property located at 5628 Plummer Boulevard, zoning map 13E, parcel 23. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Nansman Voting Borough, zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Northern Growth Area Core Support Use District. When you act on this request, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to City Council relating to Conditional Use Permit, CUP 2020-023. Staff Planner Brittany Collier will present staff's report.
Thank you. As stated, this CUP is to establish a family-day home on property located at 5628 Plummer Boulevard. The property up for discussion is located within the Northern Growth Area Core Support Use District and is a part of the Nansman Voting Borough. The subject property is zoned RLM Residential Low Medium Density and is located within the Belleville Meadows subdivision. The property is surrounded by single-family homes zoned RLM and RU Residential Urban. During the review and consideration of this application, it was discovered that improvements had been made to the home without receiving proper permitting. As such, in December of 2020, a notice of violation was received by the property owner regarding non-permitted improvements. The property owner has since worked with the city to come into compliance and obtain all necessary permits for the improvements. The applicant proposes to utilize the existing home as a family-day home to provide care for up to 12 children. The one-story, single-family home is approximately 1,300 square feet with four bedrooms and two bathrooms. The home is currently being utilized to provide care for up to four children, which does not require a CUP. The applicant is proposing to utilize three of the bedrooms, as well as the living room and kitchen. The children will also have access to one full bathroom. The family-day home is not currently licensed through the Virginia Department of Education, however, it will need to be licensed in order to care for five to 12 children. Section 31-701 of the Unified Development Ordinance provides supplemental standards for family-day homes with five to 12 children. Family-day homes are required to have 50 square feet of space if furniture and equipment are included. The daycare will utilize 742 square feet of the approximately 1,300-square-foot home, which is adequate space for the requested maximum of 12 children. The age range of the children that are to be cared for is one to 12 years old. The applicant will have one employee to help care for the children and will have to comply with the child-to-staff ratios established by the Commonwealth of Virginia. The proposed hours of operation will be from 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday. The proposed hours of operation are consistent with those outlined in the supplemental standards for family-day homes. In addition to the two parking spaces required for the residential use, the proposed use will need one parking space for the family-day home, plus one parking space for the employee. Therefore, the required minimum parking for this site is four spaces. The property has a two-car driveway, and there is availability for on-street parking. Therefore, there is adequate parking for the residential use and the proposed use. Lastly, the home has a four-foot-tall fence bordering the approximately 6,200-square-foot backyard, which meets the required minimum of 1,000 square feet outdoor play area for family-day homes. The use of the outdoor area will be limited between the hours of 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. in accordance with the supplemental standards, and would have little to no impact on the surrounding neighbors. Staff finds that the proposed use meets the criteria for conditional use permits as set forth in Section 31-306 of the Unified Development Ordinance, and that the use would not negatively impact the surrounding area. Accordingly, staff recommends approval of CUP 2020-025 with conditions, I'm sorry, 023 with conditions.
Officer Jackson?
Does someone else have, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. We will now open the public hearing. Who would like to come forward to speak in favor of this request?
Good afternoon. My name is Geneva Bowden Bagley. I am one of the owners of Rainbow Smiles. We're coming into our second year being a state-licensed daycare. We currently, as Ms. Brittany said, have four children. We're asking for, to increase that number, as we have seen increased applications as families are returning back to work. We're getting increases in applications to take in more children. We have very adequate space in the home. As Ms. Brittany said, majority of the home is used for childcare except for one bedroom. If approved, we're looking to have the additional treasuring into the childcare, and we're hoping to approve parents as we are approved to accept them. Thank you.
Before we leave the podium, just clarification, your name is Bagley?
Bowden Bagley.
Bagley, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd speak in favor of this request? Hearing none. Are there anyone in opposition? Hearing none. We would, commissioners, questions, comments, or motion? We close the public hearing on this item.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I move for the approval of CUP 2020-0023 with the three conditions.
Put the three conditions in motion for approval from Commissioner Edwards. You got a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion in motion? Mr. Wyman, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore. Commissioner Eberwine.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
And Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Chairman, the application is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Bagley, you have an approval, and it will go to City Council on 3/16/21. Thank you. Commissioners, we have two items, the next-door establishments, 304 Eugenia Street, and the other one is 306 Eugenia Street. I would like to maybe have one presentation from staff, and then we will vote separately on the commissioners. Do you agree? Okay. The first item is Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2021-027, 304 Eugenia Street, and the second one is Conditional Use Request, CUP 2021-028, 306 Eugenia Street. Mr. Wyman, you call, read the caption, please.
Yes, sir. Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2021-027, 304 Eugenia Street, submitted by Jonathan Rogers, Solid Builders Incorporated, applicant on behalf of JD Equity Solutions LLC, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306, 31406, and 31801 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a Conditional Use Permit to restore a non-conforming residential structure to an extent of greater than 50% of its replacement cost on property located at 304 Eugenia Street, zoning map 34G19A, parcel 5. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, zoned RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. The second one, which you will have a separate public hearing for, is Conditional Use Permit Request, CUP 2021-028, 306 Eugenia Street, submitted by Jonathan Rogers, Solid Builders Incorporated, applicant on behalf of JD Equity Solutions LLC, property owner, in accordance with Sections 31306, 31406, and 31801 of the Unified Development Ordinance, to grant a Conditional Use Permit to restore a non-conforming residential structure to an extent of greater than 50% of its replacement cost on property located at 306 Eugenia Street, zoning map 34G19A, parcel 4. The affected area is further identified as being located in the Suffolk Voting Borough, zoned RM Residential Medium Density Zoning District. The 2035 Comprehensive Plan designates this area as part of the Central Growth Area Mixed Use Core Use District. When you act on these requests, you will be acting on a resolution to present a report and recommendation to the City Council relating to Conditional Use Permit, CUP 2021-027. and recommendation to the City Council relating to conditional use permit, CUP 2021-027, and separately, CUP 2021-028. Staff Planner Amy Boekie will present you with a staff report for both.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Commission. I am presenting two conditional use permit applications. The first property is 304 Eugenia Street, and the second property is 306 Eugenia Street, which are directly beside each other. The applicant and property owner, as well as the nature of the request, are all the same for both applications. The purpose of these two CUP requests are to renovate two existing, non-conforming, single-family dwellings by more than 50% of their replacement cost. Section 31-801 of the Unified Development Ordinance, which pertains to non-conforming structures, requires that a CUP be obtained in instances where the proposed renovations would exceed 50% of the replacement cost. The affected properties are located in the Mixed Use Core Use District in the downtown area. They are zoned RM, residential medium, excuse me, residential medium-density zoning district. Single-family residences are the most prevalent land use in this zoning district. To the north, there is M2, heavy industrial zoning. To the east, there's also RU, residential urban zoning, and there's also OI, office institutional zoning. Both of the existing structures are non-conforming with regards to building setback requirements. The home at 304 Eugenia was constructed circa 1950, and the home at 306 Eugenia was constructed circa 1935, which both predate zoning regulations. The current setback standards for the RM district require a 25-foot front yard and 10-foot side yard setbacks. Another non-conforming aspect of the properties is that no off-street parking is currently provided, as the front yard and side yards are inadequate to allow for off-street parking. Current zoning regulations require that two off-street parking spaces are provided per single-family home. 306 Eugenia Street is on the left-hand side of the aerial above, or street view above, and that home is roughly 1,700 square feet, four bedrooms, and two bathrooms. The Suffolk Real Estate Assessor has the estimated value of that structure at approximately $20,000, and the applicant proposes to spend roughly $97,000 on the renovation, which exceeds the 50%. And then the home at 304 Eugenia Street, on the right-hand side of this street view, is roughly 1,700 square feet, and it's comprised of three bedrooms and two bathrooms. The Suffolk Real Estate Assessor has the estimated value of that structure at $32,000, and the applicant proposes to spend roughly $90,000 on the renovation. The proposed renovations pertain to the exterior and interior of both dwellings. That includes framing, drywall, plumbing, electrical replacements to the front porches, HVAC systems, et cetera, essentially a full renovation of both structures. The Departments of Public Works Engineering, Public Utilities, and Traffic have no objections to these applications. The applicant will be required to obtain the necessary building permits through the Division of Community Development, which are on hold until the CUP process concludes. Action Statement 6-1K of the city's 2035 Comprehensive Plan states to encourage construction of infill housing in the Mixed Use Core and Core Support Use Districts. Staff finds that both conditional use permit requests meet the criteria set forth in Sections 31-306, 31-406, and 31-801 of the Unified Development Ordinance. The proposed renovations to the existing dwellings that are currently in disrepair will hopefully enhance the property values and enjoyment of residents in the community. Additionally, they should encourage other redevelopment projects and investment in the downtown area. Lastly, the subject properties as renovated will continue to be in keeping with the character and development pattern of the neighborhood in which they are located, as there are many other narrow lots in this area of downtown that are also comprised of non-conforming structures. Therefore, staff recommends approval of both of these CUP applications, CUP 2021-27 and CUP 2021-28, with the conditions that are noted in your staff report. And I will stand to answer any questions that you may have. I do have available for you the floor plans for the renovations on the next several slides. So this is the first floor of one of the structures, as well as the second floor. And then lastly, this is the other structure at 306 Eugenia Street, and that proposed floor plan, if you would like to view those in making your decision. Thank you very much. I'll stand to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Amy. Officer Jackson?
No, sir. Not a standing, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We'll now open a public hearing on the CUP 2021-027, 304 Eugenia Street. Who would like to speak in favor of this request? Is there anyone here that would like to speak in opposition to this request? We'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, question, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve CUP 2021-027 with conditions.
Motion for approval, Commissioner Staylor.
Second.
Commissioner Hicks. Discussion of the motion? How do you call the roll, please?
Let me turn it on. Yes, sir. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Wyon, and this will go to City Council on 31621 with a motion for Now we will take question, comments, or motion for a conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-028, 306 Eugenia Street. Question, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we approve CUP 2021-028 with conditions.
Motion for approval, but Commissioner Staylor.
Second.
Mr. Eberwin, the second. Discussion of the motion?
Just one question. I guess this to the attorney. Did we have to open the public hearing before, open and close the public hearing before we did this?
We should probably, I think you only announced for the first property, so we should probably do.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner.
Don't want us to mess up.
We'll now open the public hearing for...
Should I withdraw my motion?
Yes.
I withdraw my motion.
Thank you, Commissioner Hicks, for that oversight on my part. We'll now open the public hearing for a conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-028, 306 Eugenia Street. Open the public hearing. Is anyone speaking in favor? Hearing nine, is anyone speaking in opposition? We'll now close the motion, the here-public hearing on the CUP 2021-028, 306 Eugenia Street. Commissioners, question, comments, or a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve CUP 2021-028 with conditions.
Thank you.
And I'll second that for the second time.
Any discussion of the motion? Mr. Wyon, you call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Give it a little deja vu. Commissioner Creekmore.
Yes.
Commissioner Eberwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Edwards.
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman.
Yes.
Commissioner Hicks.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Rector.
Yes.
Chairman Singleton.
Yes.
And Commissioner Staylor.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, the motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Congratulations to the applicants. This will go to City Council on 316 with the motion for approval. That will close our public hearings today. Am I sure if we had any old business that needed to be discussed?
No, sir.
Now, the new business, before we go to the items that Mr. Wyon's going to cover for us, we had a request from council to set up a steering committee for the Comprehensive Plan, and I've had some favorable requests from the commissioners, and I thank you for your request. And with that request, I made the appointment of Commissioner Hicks to that steering committee. And Mr. Wyon, will you cover the items, status reports?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. We have a status report of the results from City Council's meeting on January 19th. You may recall rezoning request, RZN 2021-015, conditional. This was 5,100 Nansman Parkway. This was a request to rezone RLM property to RU 18 along Nansman Parkway. That request was withdrawn, so that did not go before City Council. It was withdrawn on the applicant's request. Conditional use permit request, CUP 2021-022, Early Results Daycare and Learning Center. This is for an expansion of an existing daycare center at 3215 Bridge Road. This was approved at City Council unanimously. So that concludes the results of City Council's meeting, Mr. Chairman. We haven't had no preliminary plats over the last month, so nothing to report there. However, I did want to take this time to introduce you all to a new planning staff member. We are very fortunate to have Erin Deers as a part of our staff now. She comes to us as a planner one, and we're keeping her very busy. Welcome to Suffolk, but she's a Suffolk resident, and we are very excited to have her as a part of our staff. You will be hearing from her at that podium very shortly, I'm sure, so just wanted to share that.
And welcome. Commissioner Rector, does the ordinance committee have anything to bring forward?
We had an awful lot of very good discussion. We have, we have not reached a consensus yet as to changes to the ordinance, so that will be potentially forthcoming.
Commissioners, any comments?
I do have a question, and this is probably directed at maybe Mr. Wyon. On the family daycare thing that we approved a couple of presentations ago, if the person who is running that daycare decides that they don't want that to be their primary residence anymore and they move out, does that change its classification or anything involving any of the, any of the permit that we issued, any of the conditional use permit? Or does it just simply go with that property and has nothing to do with the fact that somebody may or may not be using that as their primary residence?
So a conditional use permit is required. It's a family day home. That's when you're doing it inside your house, and it's limited to five to 12 units per acre. So, I'm sorry, five to 12 unit, five to 12 children. Got density on my mind, I apologize. So in short, it runs with the property. So if someone were to purchase that property, they would have the same right to operate a family day home out of it, provided that the use of the property for that purpose does not cease for a period of two years or greater. Once it ceases for a period of two years, the CUP is null and void, and they would have to come back and request one through the process.
But I guess if I applied through that with my own primary residence, and then I moved out but still owned it and was still operating it as a daycare, does that change its status from a family daycare to a business entity of some kind?
Potentially. That's probably a question we would direct towards our zoning administrator, but my understanding is, at that point, it would not be operating as kind of an accessory to the primary residential portion, so that may institute a change of use.
That would necessitate a change of use because then it would be...
Will you come to the microphone, please?
Jennifer Cobb, our zoning administrator.
It would then turn into a commercial use because it would not be operating as an accessory to the primary residence. So then it would be requiring different parking and different standards.
Just out of curiosity, how would you find that out?
Typically, it's complaint-based, or somebody would find it on the internet and then call us, or a neighbor would call us and say, you know, there's a lot more activity coming into that property, and we would go out and inspect it, and then knock on the door or make contact.
And I would presume that if the operator were to change, then they would have to go through with the health department and the other, as far as getting it licensed in their name.
If it was a change in name or a different LLC or something coming in there, then they would have to get a different clearance as well through the business license.
Commissioners, any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have two comments. First of all, I want to, it's good to see Mr. Scott Mills, I just wanted to recognize him in the audience. And I want to publicly thank the city staff for all you have done over these last two years. It has been rough. I always say this, and I want to say it publicly, you know, when we receive our packet, I used to look for a name called Kevin Wyon, because I knew if Kevin Wyon was coming to present, I needed to drink some coffee. And so, but I just want you to say publicly, I think you're doing a great job so far. Also, you know, we're on the planning commission, we get a lot of background help, and I wanted to publicly today thank Ms. Merrick for keeping us straight here and always, you know, you have to call, you need something, she's always there, as well as Officer Jackson, who is always there for us. On a sad note, I want to send my condolences to the Pulaski Baptist Church family and the death of their pastor, Reverend Dr. Rodney Rogers, who passed this week. And on a personal note for me, I wanted to send condolences to Ms. Martha Moody and Ms. Evelyn Falk and Ms. Mary Swett, and the loss of my personal good friend, Michael Falk, and the Piney Grove Buckhorn community. He honestly, this is a true statement, he was the greatest driver in the city of Suffolk history, period. When we used to play softball, T-ball games, at a young age, you would look for a big Mike to come at age of seven, driving out of the woods of Buckhorn with his little car. And so, that's on a personal note, so I think you all are giving me time to send those condolences to the family, so thank you.
I know for a fact that Mr. Creekmore has did his certification for planning. Does any, is there another planner went other than you?
No, I'm the only one on this, and really, I was going to say something basically to the public. If you're ever assigned to a commission such as this, there is training that is required and necessary for us to be able to perform in this capacity. This training that I'm going through now is Zoom-based because of the pandemic. I was supposed to have gone through three years ago when I was originally appointed, but it's very effective. It's through VCU, Virginia Commonwealth University out of Richmond, and this particular training course that I'm going through now, which is a little different than some of the other courses that other commissioners have gone through, because it is Zoom-based, it's about 20 to 25 people involved in this, all over the state, and these are for commission members that are on large cities, cities like ours, small cities, and also, excuse me, counties for training, and it really is based on, it gives you an update as to what is happening in the... And it really is based on, it gives you an update as to what is happening in the planning departments and what our responsibilities are in terms of working with the staff, which in Suffolk, it was interesting, it has been interesting, I'm about halfway through this course, but it is very interesting that Suffolk is very much in line with the recommendations that the state puts out as to how things are being run, including this meeting. So it's been very beneficial to me. But again, for anyone who is appointed to Planning Commission or any other commissions, I would guess there is training available and you just don't come and participate without having some sort of basic knowledge. So that's, it's been very informative to me. Thank you.
It also comes with homework. Plenty of homework.
Yes, it does. There are tests and quizzes involved in this.
I know, it's been a few years since I've gone through, but after finishing that course, my perspective of planning issues changed drastically. Whenever I travel, I see things entirely different as a result of that training course. Thank you again. Any other comments, commissioners? If not, we stand adjourned.